We'll try again. We'll go ahead and call this February 21st, 2017, meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to welcome and introduce our new city manager, Adam Hammett, and ask him to lead us this evening in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Adam, and again, welcome. I would like to start the meeting with a moment of silence. We lost a great member of our community this past week, and a former city councillor, Don Nelson, who served on this board from 1996 through 1999, and also on the Parking Commission from 1994 through 1997. So I'd like to honor and remember Don this evening with a moment of silence. Not only was he a great contributing member of our society, but he was also a wonderful parent, father, and grandfather, and friend to many of us in the community of Whitefish. So I'd like to take a moment of silence in remembrance of Don. Thank you very much. And we will start with communications from the public. This is time set aside for the public to comment on items that are on the agenda but not advertised as a public hearing, or anything else you'd wish to bring to the attention of the council. Any public communication tonight?
Mayor, council, my name's Jamie Moore, 120 Washington Avenue, right next door to City Beach parking lot, and I'd like to talk a little bit about City Beach. I think what you're doing is probably on the right path. I think it's great. I wish you would extend that to some nighttime regulations, because as being a neighbor of the beach, I hate to say this, but you're the rudest neighbor ever, as being the city, being part of that. I'm sorry, but the issues begin late, as far as I'm concerned. During the days, Maria's problem, but during the nighttime, I would love to see a 10 o'clock shutdown instead of 11, like it is now. I'm a working man, and so are many of my neighbors. It's difficult, because 11 means 12, as you probably well know. I'd like to see that gated and closed, and the boat launch closed at 10 as well, and that enforced, because the noise is the issue down there, and it's always after hours. Those are a couple of things that really are the biggest issues down there. So if you take those into consideration, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, Jamie. Just for clarification, are you referring to a request to gate the boat launch solely, or the actual park?
No, the parking area.
Parking area, okay.
The boat, I don't see being able to do the boat launch itself, but boats come and go at 1:00 in the morning, and nowadays with those huge new stereos, it's a huge issue. And I'm afraid I'm the one that's going to be arrested one of these nights. And I don't want that to happen, right? I'm trying to avoid that.
Thanks for your comments. Further public comment tonight? Chris?
Chris Hyatt, 611 Summers Avenue. I'd like to speak about the removal of lifeguards and the fact that I believe that they are truly needed. It's been something that's been at City Beach for as long as I've ever known. So I would ask that we do not remove lifeguards from that situation.
I normally don't respond to public comment, Chris, but the plan is to retain two beach rangers that will function in multiple capacities, including lifeguard capabilities. It's just a reduction in staffing, essentially.
Well, no, I understand that, but not having somebody that's focused on the lake all the time, I think we will have issues.
Thanks. Further public comment tonight? Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll stay with the audience. Any volunteer board reports from the audience? Not seeing any. How about the council? Richard?
The Climate Action Committee had its first meeting. We'll have our next meeting next Tuesday, 5:00 to 6:30. We're off on a roll, and everybody had homework assignments after that first meeting, and they know that the timer is on, and we still plan to have a document in August.
Great. Further volunteer board reports? I have a couple, just as a member of Whitefish Legacy Partners. They'll be coming to the council, and this is for the public's benefit, on March 6th, to give an overview of the Close the Loop campaign, which is essentially the remaining segments of the Whitefish Trail that will circumnavigate Whitefish Lake. Also, we'll be providing an update on the Haskell Basin Trail development. We're within about $12,000 of completely fundraising that project, which will include, you know, two trailheads, one off Reservoir Road, as well as one off Big Mountain Road. So the public's welcome to attend our work session on March 6th. And then in addition, the Whitefish Lake Institute has been working with Maria and the Parks and Rec Department on a 2017-18 AIS plan for Whitefish Lake, and we'll be discussing that as well at our March 6th meeting, and everyone is welcome to attend. On that note, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any changes or additions to the February 6th meeting minutes? Richard?
Hey, I have a few. If I may, Mr. Mayor, page 19, I think that, let me get back to page 19 here for just a second. That paragraph that begins with Councillor Franzen asked and planner Compton-Ring said it's up to the employer, I think it should be "or" rather than "to," manager. So change "to" to "or." Go to page 21, and, oops, that was 21. Then on page 22, the packet, that next to the last paragraph, the one that begins with manager Sterns reported he thinks the SID, if you look up, look at that number there at the next to the last line, it shouldn't be 8 million, it should be $8,000. It's just an extra "o," zero there. And I think that in the next paragraph, beginning with Lori Collins, third line, two separate reasons, I think should be occasions. That's all.
Richard, the correction you had on page 19 actually should read, said it's up to the employer to manage who stays in workforce housing.
Okay, got it. Thank you. I struggled with that, trying to figure out exactly which way it was going to go. Thank you.
Can I have a motion for approval as corrected?
Still moved.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councillor Williams. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle, we have no scheduled public hearings for this evening, which is very rare. So we'll move right on to communications from our Parks and Recreation Director, and this will be regarding an ordinance adding a new section to Whitefish City Code Title VII, Public Ways and Property, Chapter III, Public Parks and Grounds, adopting revised City Beach rules and authorizing an officer to issue civil citations for municipal infractions committed at City Beach, and this will be on a first reading. Maria, I just had one question, or Adam, is this, will this be ordinance 17-4, or will it be 17-3, considering we had a "O2" under the consent agenda?
You're correct, 1703.
So this will be 17-03. Thanks, Michelle. Maria?
Good evening. Before you, you have a consideration of adopting an ordinance of the revised City Beach rules and authorizing the City Beach Ranger to issue civil citations for municipal infractions. In the past, the rules have been enforced by seasonal lifeguard staff. However, citations could only be issued by sworn officers resulting in a criminal citation. So by authorizing City Beach Rangers to issue civil citations for municipal infractions, charges to the general public are lessened from a criminal citation to a civil infraction. By authorizing City Beach Rangers to issue civil infractions, instead of calling the police department, as we have in the past, we expect that there will be more efficiency in managing the beach and enforcing the rules of the beach, and we will require less time from our law enforcement at the City Beach location. This will also provide seasonal staff with the necessary tools to be impactful in ensuring a clean and safe experience for our beach patrons. So staff has revised the beach rules, and we've condensed them from 19 original rules down to 10, and those rules are as follows: No dogs allowed on City Beach or the park area. No lifeguards on duty. Swim at your own risk, and no diving off floating dock. All children must be directly supervised by an adult. No fishing, swimming, or sunbathing on boat launch dock. No skateboards, skating, or biking on the sidewalks of the park. No smoking, alcohol, or glass containers allowed. Comply with the no-wake zone within 200 feet of the boat launch. No commercial vending within 200 feet of the beach, swimming area, and docks. No fireworks, and of course, help us have a safe, clean, and friendly City Beach. These revised rules have been reviewed and approved by the Park Board during their November 2016 public meeting. Now, while violation of many of the City Beach rules constitutes a municipal infraction under the current code, like open containers, some rules, like skating and biking, do not. Therefore, staff recommends that violation of the following rules constitute a municipal infraction, and there are six of those. No dogs allowed on City Beach or the park area. No skateboard, skating, or biking on the sidewalks of the park. No smoking, alcohol, or glass containers allowed. No commercial vending within the 200 feet of the beach, swim area, or docks. No fireworks, and parking violations as assigned. By clarifying the City Beach rules and authorizing City Beach Rangers to issue civil citations for violation of the rules, we hope to more effectively manage City Beach and provide a high-quality, safe, healthy experience for everybody. The financial obligation for this is in the form of printing signs with the new rules and for the staffing of the City Beach Ranger, all of which is, we have sufficient funds remaining in FY '17 to implement this, and then will also be reflected in the budget process for FY '18. Can I answer any questions for you?
Thanks, Maria. Any questions for Maria? Richard?
A couple. In Rule Number Three, and I'm looking at page 31, Number Six, all children must be directly supervised by an adult. Do we need an age for what constitutes children versus young adults? I think that that, even though it's not one of those that's subject to a citation, civil citation, but I think it may help, and usually I think the age is 12, but I mean, that's what I've seen.
Children 12 and under must be.
Yeah.
I certainly could.
Does that seem reasonable?
I certainly could add that into that, yes.
If everybody else thinks that's good. And then if I look on page 32, I think I got it now, but I had a question for what's new and what's old, to compare those rules. That would be, sometime, if you could provide that, that'd be great, so I could just see what we gave up out of the 19.
I have a color-coded list of the 19 rules for.
Well, there we go.
Just because I figured somebody was going to ask that, so yeah, I can provide that for you.
Okay. And finally, you say there's no cost, but it seems to me that we may have some cost associated with uniforms, so that rangers are easily identified.
And we do plan on uniforming our rangers.
Okay.
Yes.
But I'm going to assume that that's a minimal cost?
Correct. It's part of our, yeah, we roll that into our staffing costs for City Beach.
Okay.
Further questions for Maria? Maria, I just wanted a little bit of clarification, just for the viewing audience and to Chris's point. Can you just briefly describe what the roles and responsibilities will be of the beach ranger?
Sure.
In comparison to our traditional lifeguards?
In the past, we've had lifeguards, we've had junior lifeguards, a head lifeguard, and then we've had boat inspectors and boat launch attendants. So they've all had different titles, and they've all been doing just those specific jobs. The beach rangers will now be all trained to manage every aspect of City Beach. So they will be doing AIS inspection, they will be taking money at the boat launch, they will be picking up garbage, they will be enforcing the rules, they will be trained in rescue, water rescue, and life-saving. So they will be an embodiment of all of those different positions. We will not have the lifeguards as stationed watching the water the entire shift, but they will be more versatile, and they will be able to rescue if need be.
And in terms of staffing levels, like on a full-time, daily basis, are we going from three positions to two?
We are actually, we had, we had, at least at any one time, two over at the boat launch, and three at, in the swim area. So that would have been five. So we'll go down to, we're looking at with our AIS, we're still trying to figure out what level of inspection we'll need, but likely one at the boat launch, and a ranger in the beach area, and then a junior ranger in the beach area. So we'll go from five to three.
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Motion? Discussion? Richard?
That'll be 14-.
17-03.
Sorry. I'll move to approve ordinance 17-03, an ordinance adding a new section to Whitefish City Code Title VII, Public Ways and Property, Chapter III.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been seconded by Councillor Sweeney. Richard, did you want to make a friendly amendment regarding defining children age 12 and under, or not this time?
I would love to do that, and amend Rule Number Three to identify children as being those 12 and under.
Is there a second to the friendly amendment?
I'll second.
That has been seconded. Further discussion on the amendment? We'll vote on that first. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously, which brings us back to our original motion for approval as amended. Further discussion? Andy?
Just a question, probably for Angie and Maria, I'm not sure who. From liability standpoint, if we go from dedicated lifeguards, that they say they're lifeguards, and we go to a beach ranger person who is actually trained in water safety and water rescue, how does that affect or change our liability, I guess?
I will let Angie answer that.
Andy, part of the reason then we looked at getting rid of lifeguards was, and Maria, you could probably speak to this a little bit more, the lifeguards were doing a little bit more of watching people's kids than they were of actually, you know, a babysitting service rather than, you know, really doing what a lifeguard does. And, you know, we do have the recuse statute that protects us from liability, but we almost felt like having lifeguards that were doing kind of a part-time job, and not as good a job as they could do, is actually creating a duty on our behalf, and taking away some of our immunity under the recuse stat.
And one of the things, as I recall the discussion, Andy, the Whitefish Beach was the only municipal beach we could find in the state that had actual lifeguards. No other municipality does that, or has done that, and for that very reason, is to avoid that.
Further discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion carries unanimously as well. Michelle, thanks, Maria.
Thank you.
We will move on to Item 8A, which will be our own Resolution 17-10, a resolution authorizing support for a transportation alternatives grant application for the Baker Avenue Underpass project, which was identified, again, in our update to our downtown master plan, and we'll turn to Craig for his staff report.
Good evening. My staff report begins on page 38 of your packet. So I think everybody's fairly familiar with the Baker Avenue Underpass. This has been a project that's been long identified in downtown master plans, dating back to the original 2006 master plan that was done for the downtown area, and then it was basically brought back up and revalidated in 2015, when that plan was updated. This is a key component of the downtown master plan, essentially linking the areas west of the viaduct to the Central Avenue and downtown streetscape. The project itself exists just to the north of Railway Street, and as we went through the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, which was just recently adopted by council, again, this area became a very critical focus point of public outreach, residents, business owners, and basically everyone that attended workshops and public meetings, continued to identify this as a very key issue to address safety crossing Baker Avenue. So, in an effort to move forward with this project, we have identified MDT's Transportation Alternatives Program as a grant source to help fund the program. The program uses funds that are essentially set aside for local government entities similar to the city of Whitefish to help manage transportation and recreational trails. In preparation for this grant, which is due next month, we contracted with the WGM Group, who is responsible for the rendering that we're looking at right now. We have a contract for roughly $9,000 with WGM to essentially help us estimate the cost on the project and show some conceptual designs, which they've come up with in your packet. When we identified this project in the recent Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, it came with a price tag of about $688,000. This was based on, I believe, a 14-foot wide by 10-foot-high structure, using projects, you know, of similar size and magnitude throughout the nation, and that was an all-inclusive cost. That included not only construction of that structure, but also the engineering design. As we began the process to put these concepts together, it became pretty clear, rather quickly, that not only the downtown master plan, but the stakeholders involved in the project, city staff and those who have been kind of most influential in promulgating this thing forward, were envisioning a wider structure. And so what you see on this image is a 24-foot-wide underpass. It's 14 feet high, excuse me, it's 11 and 1/2 feet high as opposed to the 10-foot-high structure that we proposed in the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And so of course, the cost estimate has gone up. Based on this current design, we're looking at a construction cost of about $677,000. So in similar range to the previous project, but that does not include engineering design or contingency, which according to MDT, we need to not only add, but add significantly. The TA grant process recommends a 30% adder for preliminary engineering, a 20% adder for construction administration, or basically inspection, and an additional 20% for contingency. So based on this TA process, we've now taken our $677,000 project and bumped it up to about $1.15 million. This, of course, is a little more than we had anticipated funding, and we did show, or we do earmark, about $400,000 in our current TIF projections. That $400,000, of course, comes with, you know, some issues of its own. Most importantly, that it's currently not committed, and Dana can help me as I go on through this, but there are a number of other non-committed projects that we're looking at in that TIF, in that TIF projection. The current forecast includes a total of about $1.58 million in non-committed projects. So in addition to that $400,000 for the Baker Avenue Underpass, we're also showing $100,000 for the, of potential dollars, for the 93 South Corridor Plan, $300,000 for the Central Avenue Project, which we are hoping to proceed with this year, about $138,000 for the widening of Baker, the viaduct, the rest of, essentially, the project above this underpass, $96,000 for possible chamber funding, I believe that's earmarked for workforce housing, and about $550,000 for the Depot Park Master Plan. Add all that up, and you're at about $1.5 million. But the cash flow for the TIF project obviously becomes quite a question mark as well, as we move forward with some of these projects. There is considerable cash freed up. I believe I put the current TIF projections in the packet. You're on page 45. So you'll see that considerable funds do free up about fiscal year 2020, which essentially, by the time we get through the TA, the grant process, engineering design, bidding, that's right in line with when we look to build this project. So there's still opportunity there. Nonetheless, you know, ultimately, what we're looking at is a project considerably more than that, more than what we had originally anticipated. And so we were hoping to match TA dollars with a 50% local match, but based on that $400,000 estimate, we're likely going to be short. Nonetheless, it is our recommendation that we move forward with a resolution to authorize our intent to fund this project at a total not to exceed $400,000.
Questions for Craig?
And that's it, yeah.
Richard?
I suspect I know your answer, but if we're looking at these contingencies and all these other add-ons that are required, is there any chance that any of that money won't get spent? In other words, if you've got a 20% contingency, there shouldn't be too many unknowns in this, I'm just trying to find ways to bring this back down into...
Yeah, I think there's, you know, potential ways to value engineer this structure into a, you know, something more in line with what our original projections were. I think we need to look pretty closely at the width. I mean, obviously, we want a structure here that's safe, that's, you know, has free flow, that has a nice, comfortable feel. Expanding it to 24 feet is a pretty significant jump, and so that may be one thing that we want to look at as we go into final design. I personally think that, I realize that going through the MDT process does add cost, it does add administrative hours, but, you know, I think, you know, 50% for design, engineering, and construction administration is more than we're going to wind up spending. And so I think these numbers are estimated high, and I think that even at $400,000, if we're going in with this budget, a 35% match, which is essentially where we'd be, is going to look fairly enticing to MDT. The minimum match that they require is 13%, so, you know, we're nearly tripling the minimum, which I think helps.
How often does this grant cycle come up?
I think it's every other year. I don't, I don't know, though.
Okay, that's fine. Richard, did you have a question?
How does this compare in terms of scope to the underpass at Three Mile Drive in Kalispell there at FBCC?
Similar in length. That, I believe, is a 12-foot-wide underpass, so nearly double in width, though.
Okay, because that seems narrow to me.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Richard, or excuse me, Andy, then Frank?
I think Frank's up first. Craig, I hate to raise it, and a pre-Craig issue, but I look at this, as I'm reading through your memo, it's nicely done and appropriately put together, but I see Smythe Park Bridge coming back to haunt us. We started with a budget we thought was going to be all in at some $600,000. The city commits $300,000 to the project, because there was other funding. The city commits $300,000 to the project because there was other funding. We ended up spending total well over $1 million for that bridge. City's commitment went from $300,000 to north of 6 or 7 or 8. We commit to $400,000 on this project. I don't, what happens when it spirals out of control? And I'm not taking shots at you, but I just, this appears to me to be exactly the same kind of a scenario, same kind of numbers that we were presented with when the initial concept for Sky Park Bridge came, you know? We know what the bridge is going to be like, we've talked to the vendor, he knows what it's going to cost, and low and behold, those numbers were not even close by half.
Right.
And then the city is, we're stuck. I'd like to see this project go forward. I think it's an important one, but what happens if we commit $400,000 and this thing spins out of control?
You know, obviously, as part of the, you know, the grant application process, the city does need a resolution of intent. And so, we originally had, you know, a resolution of intent with a 50-50 match sort of in mind for this. When these revised numbers came out just a couple of weeks ago, as we got further into, they just announced the TA grants, I believe, in late December. So we kind of began going through the process. You know, the 70% adder really didn't come up until about two weeks ago. And so, obviously, that pushed us well over the threshold of a project that we felt comfortable spending 50% of, or purchasing 50% of. And so that's why, you know, the resolution does cap our funding out at $400,000. I honestly don't know what MDT, how MDT is going to take that. Based on the project estimates, that's a cost share of 35%, which is well above their minimum. But, you know, ultimately, if the project goes over, I'm thinking they're going to be looking to the city for more money. I think probably before we actually accepted dollars on the grant, we'd need to be much more comfortable that, you know, these cost estimates are exactly where they are, likely taking these plans a little further, giving them to some bidders or some potential contractors and getting real-world numbers. I don't think that process was carried out with the Sky Park Bridge. I think that the original estimates on the Sky Park Bridge were put together, and I'm just not sure how well those were vetted with contractors.
I'm not either, and that process was the concern I had.
Right.
We were led to believe that they were fairly well-vetted. And that's, again, I'm not taking shots here, I'm just saying, that's what, in fact, happened. It's happened more than once. But that project, I mean, again, I look at this thing and I just see that thing hit me right square in the face. It's, we're dealing with the same set of conceptual problems here. And if we were to proceed on this, we'd have to have some degree of certainty that when we got into the finals of this thing or before we accepted any money, we had not estimates, we had real, honest-to-God, this is what it's going to cost, fixed bids, I don't know how you get around it, kind of routines.
Yeah, you know, ultimately, at this point, we're under contract with WGM to produce, you know, conceptual-level designs and cost estimates. And so, that's the process that we've gone forward with. We do have, you know, rough quantities, which are included in the staff report, you know, for materials and, you know, units that are expected to build this thing. But, you know, until you really get into the, you know, the deep engineering design and put together a bid package that's ready to send out, we won't be to a point where we're ready to get hard numbers on this thing. I think really, at this point, all we can do is, you know, show the concept that we've come up with, compare that to local, you know, not only regional but national projects that have been carried out on projects like this, and those are the numbers that we have. So, we do have, you know, a rough unit price estimate, but, you know, that's based on a concept as opposed to a final design.
Craig, go ahead. One more question.
My, just, just to humor me, who was the contractor engineer on Sky Park Bridge?
That was TDNH.
Chuck, you had a point to make?
Yes, former city manager Chuck Sterns. On Frank's question, it's exactly a very similar situation. I mean, when you're going to go under Baker Avenue and disrupt that and have to keep traffic going, we can't detour traffic around Baker. It has the potential to be an expensive project. On the safe side, MDT, through their Transportation Alternatives Project, has us adding 30% for design engineering, 20% for construction management. That's a 50% of the construction cost increase. We usually do 18, 15 to 20% for design and construction management. So there's a lot there.
They're applying 70%.
Well, then they've got 20% contingency on top of that. So, you have a lot more contingency or conservative cost estimates built into this than you did on Sky Park Bridge. But on the other hand, like Craig said, conceptual design cost estimates are, can't be that good. It's really when you get into designing everything, and then even those cost estimates aren't that good, as we learned with Sky Park Bridge, City Hall, and everything else. You know, I guess Steph has felt that it's worth taking a chance on it, but if you're worried about it, don't do it. But you'll never do it without a grant, so.
I could just point out a couple of things on the actual cost estimate itself, which is on page 44 of your packet. You know, this estimate does have $63,500 for traffic control. You know, so essentially, what they've done is, you know, quantify the project itself, which is about $530,000, you know, and that's all the excavation, that's all the materials, that's the cost of the superstructure, which we do have numbers. That steel arch, that $136,500 line item number three is a number from an actual steel vendor, bridge construction vendor. And so, so those numbers are pretty solid. And on top of that, you know, we're adding, you know, things like mobilization, traffic control, the erosion control. And so, I'm confident that this cost estimate is as solid as it can be at this stage of the project. I can't personally, at this point, speak to exactly how we went into the CTEP grant with Sky Park or where that estimate came from. I'd be happy to research that a little more and come back, and we could talk about that at the next meeting. For what it's worth, this grant application is due on the 31st of March, and so, we're not up against, you know, D-Day here. You know, this is something that we could, you know, table and talk about again at the next meeting.
Andy?
I typically don't like to talk about things that aren't pertinent to the actual decision we're making, but I just, I would hope that, and I'm going to fully support this, and I believe it's the right thing to do, but I would like us to at least have the option at some point to look at the width on that. 24 feet's huge. I mean, by example, Dakota on the narrow section of the hill is 22 feet back a curve to back a curve. So, I mean, this thing is as large as a city street. Having been through a few trail tunnels in my life, I can say 24 feet's pretty large. If that's ultimately what it has to be, I get that, but the fact that the engineering to support Baker is probably a really expensive part of it, and the wider we go, the more costly that's going to be. So, hopefully, at some point, that would be a point of consideration, that we could look at the width, and that may help on the cost. But I don't know if we're fully committed to that specific design, once we go through the grant process or not. So I guess that's my convoluted way of asking your question.
I think that, you know, essentially, what we're submitting is our concept-level drawings. Sorry to beat a dead horse on that one, but based on final bids, we would have opportunities to modify the project so long as it still meets the original intent. You know, at this point, MDT and the TA, you know, grant reviewers are going to be most concerned about, you know, the safety that this project brings, you know, but for what could happen within that structure, I think that a 12-foot-wide and a 24-foot-wide tunnel are going to provide you the same safe crossing of Baker. I personally think that 12 feet is too narrow. I think 24 feet kind of crosses a cost adder that we may need to look at as well. But I think that the width of this structure isn't written in stone, you know, by submitting this application.
Andy?
I would move that we adopt Resolution 17-10, I believe we are, isn't that correct? It's a Resolution Authorizing Sport Transportation Alternatives Grant Application for the Baker Avenue Underpass Project.
Second?
Would you like to speak to your motion, Andy?
What's that?
Would you like to speak to your motion? You already have, but, okay. Further comment on the motion? Richard?
I'd just like to point out, this is a key part of the downtown master plan and the continuation of the bike and pedestrian plan, and that this will be something that I think we can all be very pleased that we got accomplished and that the city will be happy with. And I do know that at a certain width, that it becomes welcoming rather than something people would hesitate to pass through. So I think we need to keep that in mind.
I have a couple of questions I didn't get to before the motion came down. It was my fault. Craig, on page 42, the schematic, kind of the plan view drawing, does the cost estimate include all of the approach paths, you know, landscaping? I saw the line item for benches, et cetera, but, you know, the path connecting, you know, the east approach, you know, through the O'Shaughnessy property to Depot Park, et cetera? Or are those additional costs that will be borne by the city?
The cost estimate includes the orange-shaded paving shown on that. It does not include any of the Depot Park project to the east.
But it does include the extension all the way...
It includes the extension, the wraparounds back to Baker, as well as the east-west section going over towards Central Avenue.
Okay. And my second question was, have you actually reviewed the grant criteria specific to this grant? And in your opinion, how competitive will the city be in this grant cycle, considering we have a very comprehensive and adopted bike and pedestrian, you know, master plan?
Yeah, you know, Carla Belski and BJ Greve from WGM are the two individuals working primarily on the grant portion of this. They've been working pretty hard. I know they've been meeting quite regularly to go through the criteria and, you know, put together an application that's as competitive as possible. It's hard to say until you see the entire pool of candidates, but I think that, you know, the efforts that the city has gone through, you know, through our master planning process, both in the downtown master plan and the bike and pedestrian master plan, the cost share that we're putting up being significantly more than the minimum, and just the eloquent writing style of those two individuals will make us very competitive.
Okay. Maria?
I'll just add to that, because I've been helping Carla with parts of it, and there are several qualifiers for the grant, and specifically, safety, economic development, and we're meeting several of those more than are required to meet. And with also the transportation plan and the Depot Park master plan identifying the underpass as a necessity, we have four plans that we've identified over the course of several years that show this as not only a wish item, but an essential piece for transporting children from one part of our community to the school area. So, I think that we do have a good chance at it.
Great. My only, my final comment was related to our match. I mean, the grant asks for a 13%, you know, cost share. Right now, we're agreeing, or when the vote comes down, we could potentially agree to, you know, close to three times what they're requiring as a match. And as Craig indicated, any overrun, if there is one, is going to be borne, most likely, you know, from the city. So, from my perspective, if we offered a generous 25% match, which would bring our contribution down about $150,000, it would still leave the city the option to contribute additional dollars if and when we do see overruns associated with that project. And I think that would be a more reasonable way to approach this, particularly if it exceeds, or we're coming back to the coffers in excess of $400,000, it's inevitably going to compromise or take away from other TIF priority projects that we have identified in our TIF plan. So, just a thought I had as I looked through this packet and kind of the finances and city match contribution. On that note, further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign. And that motion does carry unanimously. Michelle?
Thanks, Craig. Thanks, Maria. We will move on to communications from our city manager. You have the city manager's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for Adam?
I would just like to acknowledge, if I can get to that page quick enough, we have three new hires at the city. I'd like to welcome Corey Ledbetter, our new firefighter and paramedic who started back in December, Mark D'Arso, I hope I pronounced that correctly, our Public Works Assistant Operator, and then Sal Bacaro, our new firefighter and paramedic. And just for the public's knowledge, these were all positions that replaced prior positions, so it does not reflect an increase in staffing. Adam, anything else to report on between February 15th and the 21st?
No, not at this time, but I will be writing this report next week, or for the next meeting.
Great. Look forward to it. Thanks. Chuck?
Former manager, city manager Chuck Sterns. I just had one item. We put three chairs as samples in the council conference room, which would be examples of possible chairs for the new city council conference room. We'd like you all to go sit in all of them. Hopefully, this is a short enough meeting that you could do that. And to help assist your ranking, I gave you one, two, and three dots, so you can each vote for the chair of your choice. You don't have to vote for all three, you can just vote for one, but if you would put a dot on the chair or chairs of your choice, it would help us figure out which ones to get for you.
Which ones are cheaper?
And we'll give Adam a vote as well.
Thanks, Chuck. We'll move on to item 10A, our selection for a city council member to participate on our rating panel and selection committee for our Affordable Workforce Housing Plan Phase 2. Any volunteers for that committee? I thought Katie would raise her hand, and she did. Showing of hands for appointing Katie to that selection committee? Thanks, Katie. Appreciate it. And we will move on to communications from the city councilors. Pam, would you like to start tonight?
We've been invited by the Montana Renewable Energy Association to join seven other Montana communities in a grant application to the Solar Foundation. And if successful, that grant would allow us to work with the MREA to identify a specific work plan and set goals for a solar target. I spoke with Karen Hilding, and she's confident that just sending a letter of intent to join in this grant application doesn't necessarily commit us to fiscal responsibility. So I'd like to go ahead and send that letter, which is due this Friday. Yes, if that's okay with everybody.
Would that be a letter that you prepare?
Yes.
Okay. Showing of hands for support. Thanks, Pam. Is that a letter you'd like the entire council to sign?
I will. We have a draft copy from MREA that we can, you know, all approve, so I'll send that out via email.
Great. Thanks, Pam. Richard?
I've been thinking about the Local Government Study Commission that the voters approved, and I don't believe... And I don't believe we've seen a report from that commission. And I was hopeful that we could agree to ask Angie to send a letter to the commission members, reminding them of their duty as elected officials to present their report recommendations and findings to the council and public as soon as possible.
Show of hands for support of that request? Thanks, Richard. Thanks, Angie.
And I would also like to recognize the gentleman who approached the podium twice as the former city manager Chuck Sterns. And Chuck, I hope to have this opportunity many, many more times. But I'm going to start tonight by thanking you for your long devoted and dedicated service to the city of Whitefish. Personally, as a city councillor, it has made my job much easier. You have given me food for thought. You have challenged me when I needed to be challenged. And you have agreed with me sometimes when I thought, wow, why are you agreeing with me? But I really have appreciated every moment of my working with you and the direction and the support you have given this city. Thank you very much.
I'll be here one more meeting.
I hope so.
But as I said, I hope to have this opportunity frequently.
Thanks, Richard. Katie?
The 911 inter-local bylaw review committee is meeting tomorrow. After our discussion with the other municipalities and the county commissioners, we're going back to look at amending the bylaw rewrites. Columbia Falls agreed with adding the text to try to set a funding date and a funding mechanism for this next cycle. And we'll talk about that tomorrow. Callisville also wanted to state that if a funding solution were to fail, that the board composition would then switch to Flathead County Sheriff, the county administrator, and the city managers instead of the current composition. So, I'm kind of throwing that out to the councillors. If you feel as though there's something you want to discuss with that composition, we will be talking about it tomorrow. Also, thank you, Chuck, for all of your service, your guidance, and everything that you've done for the city and the council. And welcome, Adam. It's going to be an exciting couple of years.
Thanks, Katie. Jen?
I'll echo what Richard and Katie have said. Thank you very much, Chuck. Hopefully, we get some good words in on the next meeting, but.
I'll be here one more meeting.
Yeah. Adam, welcome. It's nice to have you on board. Last thing is, I attended the Flathead Valley Economic Outlook Forecast this morning from Montana West Economic Development with Chuck and Adam and Dana from the city. And nothing surprising to report and nothing detrimental to report. So, for those that are interested, you can download a copy of the outlook at dobusinessinmontana.com.
Thanks, Jen. Frank?
Nothing to say to you. Thank you.
Thanks. Andy?
I'm just going to back up a little bit because I was asleep and Pam was too at the beginning of the committee reports. So, because Pam and I are the representatives to the Wisconsin Avenue Store Corridor Study Committee. We didn't get our report because we didn't meet last week. I think things are moving along pretty well. I mean, it's kind of, we've been kind of actually going through existing conditions. We've broken things down into sub areas. We're looking at those sub areas now and key development areas. And then, looking next meeting at build-out and potential for what those areas could be in terms of revenue, housing unit numbers, and all of those kind of things. So, and we've heard about a couple of proposed projects out on Wisconsin Avenue that I don't know we're fully able to discuss at this point. But committee is functioning and moving along. And hopefully, we'll get a report out at some point in the future. Other than that, welcome, Adam. Thank you. Chuck's asleep over there already, so I won't. But he's only here for one more meeting, so there you go. Thanks, Chuck.
Thanks, Andy. I just had a couple of things that came out of the work session. There was a point made at the end of the meeting that we perhaps want to consider adding an agenda item to the March 6th meeting to discuss the proposed map changes to our urban growth boundary. Is that something the council would like to see?
Yes.
Okay. Show of hands. Adam, if you don't mind, we'll have that as an agenda item for March 6th, please. The TIF priorities. And there was mention in Craig's staff report of chamber funding. And I believe you indicated that was for the Affordable Housing Study. I just wanted to make sure that's not being confused with the placeholder that has been on the TIF priority list for the trolley. And maybe Chuck could answer that.
Chuck Sterns, former city manager.
I just had to get you out there one more time.
That's fine. Actually, John, I think you're right is that was a placeholder from a few years ago that was, maybe had two purposes, the possibility of a local trolley and/or that recruitment trip out to the San Francisco Bay Area to see if we could recruit some businesses that would be interested in moving to Whitefish. And that neither of those really ever happened. So, I think that $96,000 probably can come off.
Okay. And what's the method to take that off that we need to go through? It's just been, it's been lingering on the list. I don't know, Chris, if you have any comments on whether or not the chamber's still interested in pursuing the trolley idea? I know that Kevin's not interested in the, you know, recruitment trip over to, you know, San Francisco anymore, but.
I believe that transportation is becoming a greater issue all the time, especially moving. As we know, we're going to have heart muscles. And so, I would pray back to the board and ask them what they'd like to do and maybe come back and continue with the design.
That'd be great. It's just, it's been on the list for a couple of years now. And if it needs to be coded as transportation, I'm sure that's something we can, you know, agree to or think about at least. But maybe eliminating the trolley would be a good step right now just as we get to the end of the line with our TIF priorities.
John, just real quick, can you, I don't know who's running the screen. Can you jump to page 45? The $96,000 comes as a chamber item right under Housing Authority.
Okay.
It's line 82. It's kind of bottom right. I don't know if you can zoom in. So, I'm not sure if that does specifically pertain to the trolley anymore. If, I was assuming when I wrote the report that the Housing Authority and the Chamber were together for that $96,000, but.
I actually don't see the trolley reference.
Could I?
Dana?
Thank you. That's just something that has been on there for, since I got here. And it only said chamber $96,000. I just made a note to note the trolley and recruit business. The Housing Authority, I'm not quite sure what that line is there. I'm actually working on updating this a little bit more, going through it with a fine-tooth comb right now first as we get toward the end of TIF. And with projects coming up, I really wanted to look and see where we're at. And that was somewhat at the direction of Adam already. So, he's having me really look at it, which is, it's good. So, there are some changes actually from that, that one that you see on the screen there. But the $96,000 has been set aside. Genna, Chuck is the one that I would lean to because I did not have anything specific noted there. Those are just on the uncommitted side. So, nothing has been budgeted or appropriated by council. So, it's just your holding spots for that on that side. It's not included in the projections to the end. So, if we were to move those dollar amounts over to other columns, that will reduce your cash at the very end of the TIF.
And that's the same with the Depot Park snowlot? Those are non-committed funds on the TIF pro forma. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Great. Thanks for clarification. I had no further comments. Anything else from staff or council? We are adjourned. Thanks.